Good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer Danlecker, Vice President of the Carrollton Carroll County League of Women Voters. Welcome you all to the, our Commission Chair Forman Forum tonight. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan, issue-driven organization that supports voters in the democratic process. We endeavor to encourage informed voting and in that, to be more knowledgeable, more actively involved in the decisions made by our elected officials at the local, state, and national level. Our moderator tonight is a League member and our longtime moderator for forums, Dr. Bruce Lyons.[725.18][725.18](Laughter/Applause).[726.18][726.18](Laughter/Applause.)
Well, I want to welcome you as, want to welcome you as well to this forum this evening. And for openers, let's introduce the candidates, starting on my left, Vicki Anderson, next to her, Michelle Morgan, Daniel Fagan, Lee Powers, and John Wilson on the very end there. And we will begin in a few minutes with their opening statements, but I need to first brief you and the candidates on some of the protocols we'll be following here this evening. My co-moderator is my wife, Kathy, who, as somebody, all of you know who have attended these forums in the past, is the one who keeps me semi-straight up here. She will be receiving questions and grouping them and vetting them and so forth to help us with that very important part of this forum this evening. Our timekeeper is Walter Danlecker, and you have just met his wife, the Vice President of the League, who is our Operations Chair for this evening. Our ground rules are not too difficult. We ask the candidates to give opening and closing statements of 90 seconds each. We'll give them the same amount of time, 90 seconds, to respond to the questions. We have solicited questions from a lot of people, including members of the League of Women Voters, and we will have some people out here in the audience who will accept your written questions, please. If you'll pass them on to Jackie Philington, who is clear at the back with her hand up, and Nancy Disinger, and Kate Disinger, is she here as well? Okay, these, these, right, these three individuals. We will not be able to answer all the questions. We will try those to get to those that do pertain directly to the business of the Commission. Because of our commitment to non-partisanship, we ask that the audience refrain from plotting or demonstrating support in other ways, and also that you and I cut our cellphones. The League is always trying to improve on its policy procedures and protocols to ensure equality and fairness. So as such, we have a new policy concerning video and audio recording of the candidate forums. The media have already been asked and have agreed to sign a memorandum of understanding concerning what to do about video and audio recordings. And we now ask if any individual in the audience is planning to record tonight's candidate forum, and if you are, if you will, please, prior to recording, if you go to the back and see our League member, Jackie Philington, to explain the memorandum of understanding we've developed for those who want to record these forums, and she'll ask you to sign it. Instead of video or audio recording, we encourage audience members to direct their friends who are not present tonight to use the excellent media coverage of The Times Georgian, represented by Michael O'Hearn, The Star News, represented by Sue Horn and Prissy Sullivan, and WLBB Graddick Communications, represented by Joel Brock and Steve Graddick. WLBB is live streaming on their Facebook page, News Talk 1330 WLBB during the forum this evening. Please take note that the League strongly objects to the replaying of any cut or spiced excerpts of the candidate forum in any way. So I think that's enough for procedure this evening. We need now to get to the opening statements of the candidates, and we have drawn for first place among the opening statements, and Michelle Morgan has drawn that straw. So she will begin with her 90-second opening statement, and then we'll proceed to her left and wind up with Vicki Anderson. And as the last one to give an opening statement, Vicki will be the first one to give a closing statement at the end of the forum. So Michelle, if you'll please, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. If you do not know me, I'm Michelle Morgan. I chose to come to Carroll County in 1982 to attend the University of West Georgia, where I earned a Bachelor in Business Administration and an MBA. I chose to stay after graduation, started a Likely Story Book Center, married a Carroll County native, Jimmy Morgan, I have three wonderful children, and of course, a famous green-belted dog, Caesar. And day to day, I serve alongside family members and 47 employees at Morgan Oil Company. For nearly 30 years, I have worked as a community volunteer, leading many efforts to improve our community. I took my passion for service to the county commission because we needed a fresh perspective and a leader that would listen to the people and be accessible, and that is what I have done. I believe I'm the best choice to lead Carroll County as Chair and into a better, stronger future. I have the unmatched business experience, starting my own business, as well as helping run our third-generation family business. I have the education to do this job, and I have successfully fundraised for many organizations in our community. I am qualified to do the work. I'm passionate, hardworking, and ready to keep Carroll County great, and I ask for your vote this evening.
Yes, my name's James Daniel Fagan, and I go by Daniel, but mother, when I was born, gave me two biblical names because she figured I'd probably need it. And I feel like I'm more nervous tonight than I've been so far for some reason. I've got two children, and one of them works South Wire, and the other one does hair and harem. They both graduated from Mount Zion, and, you know, and I was born in Velareca, raised in Velareca. And then, when I got married, came between Mount Zion and Carrollton, my properties next to Tanner's. If anybody wants to, or needs to need my phone number or my email, I will give it to you. There was a statement made that I didn't do that when I qualified, but the qualifying says you don't have to do that. But I want you to know, if you want to know something about me, of my volunteer work and stuff like that, I don't mind. My home phone number is 770-832-3333. My email is james.fagan@att.net. And I appreciate seeing all the people here. I think this is the biggest crowd that we've had so far. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lee Powers. I want to thank each and every one of y'all for coming out tonight. I've been serving District 5 since 2016. I'm married to my wife, Sandy, I'm married to Sandy.[1196.22][1196.22](Laughter) Sorry about that.[1198.42][1198.42](Laughter) But anyway, we've been married for 28 years, and we've got two beautiful children, one that works as a first responder here in the county. And y'all, I'm very passionate about Carroll County and what Carroll County, I'm a leader, I've been in business for over 28 years. I've had to start my own business, it's a multimillion-dollar business. I came through the worst economic times in our history of the United States, especially in our lifetime. And I came through it in the construction field where that business got hit the hardest. And I've been using my skills as a county commissioner to help the county, and I will continue to use my skills to, and business skills and administrative skills, and at any given time, we have 11 full-time employees, and at any given time with our subs, we may have 200, 200, 300 people working. We've got jobs going from Atlanta all the way to Etala, Alabama. So I am the right man for the job. I understand land use, I understand government, and I sure would appreciate y'all's vote. And thank y'all so much for coming out tonight.
Yes, thank y'all for coming out. My name is John Wilson, I'm a lifelong resident of Carroll County. I've been married to my wife, Meg, for 18 years. We have two children, Natalie is 15 and Brooks is 12. Both attend Central Middle or High School. I was a county commissioner from 2007 to 2013, during the worst economic times of Carroll County. We made it through, we did give little raises, we never laid anyone off, we never furloughed anyone. We was good at saying no to people. And as your chairman, I'll be, I'll take the same approach as I did with it, being very responsible with you, your guys' tax money, just trying to do, watch right for the county, helping with our employees, but mostly taking care of the citizens. And I would like to ask each and every one of you for your vote, I think I'm one of the best candidates. And I work with my three other brothers, so if us four brothers can work together, I think I can work with anybody, so. Thank y'all for coming out.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us today, and I see many friends out here, and I thank you all for coming. For those of you that don't know me, I have been, I have a 23-year-old daughter who is a first responder, she's a 911 dispatcher. I have a future son-in-law who is going, who is a deputy with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office, so I have firsthand knowledge of the first responders situation. I have owned a small business, I have been in hospital administration and other hospital and healthcare entities currently. I am a registered nurse at Tanner as a clinical documentation specialist. I believe public service is a calling, and I believe that I've been called for this position. I have been a commissioner for 12 years, I have served as Vice Chair. Never before in the history of Carroll County has a chairman been a commissioner before. I believe that I'm the most qualified for this position because I have the experience that matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your opening statements. We'll begin with the first question now, and we'll move to the left, so the first one to respond will be Daniel Fagan. Most of you have stated that you fill important positions in businesses you own or at another job. The Commission Chair position is a full-time job. If elected, how do you plan to transition 100% of your attention to Carroll County?
I like that question. Okay, I'm retired. I don't have nobody to feed but a little dog.[1439.51][1439.51](Laughter) And it showed up about a year and a half ago, and I give it a can of sardines and it ain't left. Excuse me, I ain't saying that. Okay, all my time will be devoted to this job. All the departments will be treated equally. All the taxpayers and landowners will be treated with respect the same way. You cannot deviate from that right there. I'm sincere in what I say. No, I've not helped public office before, but it's like I told some other people, I've worked in communications for 39 years, and I know how to treat people. And I know you don't go on somebody's property without getting permission and things like that, and that showing respect for elders and young folks and all. The young people need to get more involved, because when I look out here now, I don't see, you know, many young folks, except for the boys younger with 11, only shirt. But anyway, I just, you know, want you to know that, and I appreciate it.
Would you please repeat that question one more time?
Right, let me get it back. Most of you have stated that you fill important positions in businesses that you own or at another job. The Commission Chair is a full-time position, a full-time job. If elected, how do you plan to transition 100% of your attention to the county?
Yes, I have two full-time superintendents that work for me. One of them has asked several times, could they buy into my company? And when I receive this job, when I get voted in, I will start letting the superintendent that wants to buy my company start buying a little bit at a time, and I'm going to let him take over 100% of the company and run. And I do have some family members that work in the office that will be overseeing that, and so I'll let them start buying in, and I'm going to pull completely away, completely away from it and just transition it. It will be a very smooth transition. I've had several talks with them, and I've had several talks with my employees, and they're ready for, they're ready for the transition when I become chairman, and I'm looking forward to serving Carroll County.
And John?
That's pretty simple. I've got three other brothers and three other nephews that work in the business, and my oldest two brothers are the actual owners of the company, we all work together, so it would be just as simple as leaving there Friday and showing up here Monday.
Yes, sir. When I decided to run for this position, I contacted Lloyd Howard, who is the CEO of Tanner, to let him know that I was going to run for this position. And I contacted my bosses at Tanner and let them know that I would, if I got this position, that I would be retiring my full-time position from the hospital. So everyone's got notice, and everything's on board.
Michelle?
I've been lucky to be part of a family business that believes in giving back to the community, so this will just be a new way for Morgan Oil and a new way for our family. My daughter's in the 11th grade, and currently she's being trained on how to do the payroll. I think it's a skill she needs to know. Fourth generation, my son Patrick will be finishing at UGA next year with a degree from the Terry College of Business, and we have worked really hard. Very few businesses, less than 3%, actually make it to third generation, let alone the fourth generation. So we have done a well succession plan, so we're prepared for this.
All right, thank you. This next question will go first to Lee Powers. Would you comment on the current value of the Carroll County Tax Digest? And in relation to that, what is the current financial status for Carroll County, and what are your plans to strengthen it?
The current digest, we have, we have one of the lowest millage rates with Carroll County, with our surrounding counties. And I would like to keep our millage rate down and move forward, but to do that, we've got to build us some sustainable businesses here. And we've got to make it easy for businesses to come to Carroll County. We've got to create a friendly environment for them to come and open up their businesses. And as we do that, and as we work with Carroll tomorrow and invite new businesses to come into the county, and we'll start building that slow, sustainable tax base to keep Carroll County moving forward. And I do have a plan to do that, and I'll be working on that very hard when I become chairman.
Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry. Make sure I heard it correctly.
I ask that you comment on the current status of the county's tax digest, and tell us what the current financial status of the county is and what your plans might be to strengthen it.
Well, the, from what I understand, I hope it's around $53 million, because that's what the new proposed budget is. As far as sustaining it, you're going As far as sustaining it, you're gonna have to bring business in. We need more business in this county. Small business more especially. That's where the bread and butter of the United States is, the small business. Not big corporations that you have to give every dime in tax incentives back to the company just to get them to come here. The small businesses is what makes it. Like I said, the rate, I mean, the digest went up around, what, $3 million from last year? What the total budget is. So I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that the digest goes up as well. Over the years, when I first took office, the millage rate was 8.5. And the tax digest was whatever it was, 46 million, 50 million, whatever it may be. And over the years, the commission has lowered the millage rate to keep the digest the same. So you really, over the, from the last, from 2007 to now, I think it went from 8.5 to 8.11. So I don't know that we'll be able to keep rolling back the millage rate and keep the quality of services that the county holds and does right now. If that makes sense to everyone. I hope it does.
Okay, thank you. And Vicky?
Well, the current tax digest, I hope it meets the $53 million that is budgeted for this upcoming year and up 3 million from the previous year. I believe that in order to strengthen and go forward with our budget, we've got to find out exactly where our money is and where it's going. And right now, I don't know exactly where the money's going. Where, how did we get 53, where's 53, 3 more million coming to than what we, how we are, excuse me, how we were budgeted for the last year and now it's budgeted for 53 million? So where's that 3 million, additional 3 million coming from? And in order to strengthen, I think that we need to know what our weaknesses are first. And so it's gonna take some examination and some, I still go back to my want-to-do zero-based budgeting.
Okay, Michelle?
Our budget is based on the property tax assessment that has been predicted for the upcoming year. Plus, the sales tax has been extremely healthy with our economy lately. So that is how we came up with the $53 million. I was a part of the comp plan update, serving with other leaders in this community to decide how we're going to do these things. I also have two certifications, one from the Georgia Development of Economic, Georgia Economic Development Academy and just recently received from ACCG, a specialist at economic development. So for the last two years, I have been studying how you do economic development. How do you preserve what you like about your county, what reflects of your county, but also how to bring these new businesses and industry in. And I've been very active in the chamber and I have many state and local contacts. So I feel like I'd be the person to help bring these businesses to relieve us of higher taxes.
And Dan?
Okay, since I've not been on the board at all, I have studied the budget a little bit because I finally got it the other day. And I appreciated the folks that helped me get that, to look at it. Probably should have done, looked at it, but I didn't. Because I was, I guess, too concerned in trying to go out here and get votes and stuff. And since I don't put up no signs. But I do know that you need a balance and a moderate growth. You can't go out here and have a bunch of growth. We're gonna be like the counties beside us. And that's why I tried to get a hold of the seven mayors in this county. Because those mayors of those towns, they have to make sure of what they're needing and what we need in this county. You don't always get what you want, but you want to make sure you get what you need. And sometimes you don't get that. But, but you know, you've got, the fireman that's getting this raise and other county employees, they needed that. And that had to been where some of the money went for the 3 million. But y'all know, y'all, you want to have a paycheck. And you just gotta have some balance in growth, farming, and building of houses and stuff like that. You just got to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, folks. John? Currently Carroll County is involved in a lawsuit, Polk versus Carroll County, Georgia, over denial of a proposed skeet shooting range and corporate event venue center to be located on Martin Cemetery Road. Both the Carroll County Planning Commission and the Carroll County Board of Commissioners denied these land use applications based on existing county zoning regulations for agricultural property. Do you and will you, as commission chair, continue to support Carroll County's denial of these land use exceptions as litigation continues through our court system? If you would respond first, sir?
Yes, I'm gonna vote with the way the people want me to vote. That's the way I've always voted the last six or seven years that I was on the board. John Polk is a friend of mine, but he understands exactly where I stand on this. And but the biggest thing that people need to realize is that the courts are gonna decide that. It's not gonna be me, Lee, Vicky, or anyone else that's on this board. If the courts rule in his favor, then they rule in his favor. So the perception that a lot of people have about what's going on with that, that I'm gonna be far John Polk in his gun range is just absolutely false. I mean, we're gonna do what the people want to be done. Number one, there's gonna be seven people on that board. It takes four votes. It's not gonna happen. So that's where I'm at with the gun range.
Vicky?
We have a community development department and we have planning and zoning. We have ordinances. We have directions that have, the zoning that we are supposed to go by. And I believe that I've always done that from a comprehensive plan standpoint. So if you always follow the rules or follow the standards that have been developed, then I think that you always stay within the law when you do what's right. So I think that from a future land use, that's what we do. We go by all of that. So.
Michelle?
The Georgia State Supreme Court could actually rule in favor of the applicant or the Georgia State Supreme Court could bump it back to the county commission. So yes, there is a decision that can be made by the board in August if the Supreme Court sends it back as early as that. This happened in my district. One of the first things I did was get with the applicant. And then I took him to a bunch of neighbors to explain it to them because I don't live directly there, but I wanted to know exactly what they thought. It was not something they wanted to do. I then did a lot of research and realized that skeet shooting belongs on a minimum of 400 acres and needs to be down in the valley to assure us no sounds. So anywhere we put skeet shooting in Carroll County, we need to look really hard at what's going around there. What homes are there, what businesses? This particular area is within one mile of two school systems. It's within a mile of Sunset Hills Country Club, Tabernacle Baptist Church, and a senior retirement home. So we need to think long and hard about where we put skeet shooting anywhere in our county. So yes, come August, if the Supreme Court sends it back to me, I will be a no.
And Daniel?
I agree with what was just said. And just to add to that, if Carroll Tech buys land in that industrial park that's out there that joins that, then you're even talking about things that could happen if the shooting went on out there and people heard it. And then they say, well, that's the skeet shooting going on and it might not be now. And then that, you know, you got a, you got a shooting range up 113 before you get to Temple on the right, before you get to I-20. If I'm not mistaken, they finally got the shooting stopped on Sunday up there. And if anybody wants to differ with me, just let me know because I'm open to being corrected if I'm not right about something, you know, that's part of it. And but I, but I'm, I just, I don't like that stuff being so close to things like that. Thank you.
And Lee?
We do have zoning laws and we do have comprehensive plans that we look at when we, when zonings come before us. And I always do look at what a piece of property is on when it, when it comes to us. But more than, and more importantly than the zoning laws is, is I look at the people around the area that is gonna be affected. And if y'all look how I vote, I vote with the people. And when you have people coming up that does not want something in their community, then I'm gonna vote with the people. And I'm gonna vote with the people 100% of the time because they live in that community. Even a subdivision, I know I get criticized sometime about the subdivisions. But when, even if it's in the land use for future subdivisions, just because it is, it like, it does not mean that it's suitable in that one particular landmass. So yes, I voted against that when it came before us and I'll vote against it again. It's just not the right place. And more importantly, the people that lives there have spoken and they've spoken very loud and clear. And I am a commissioner that will listen to the people and does listen to the people.
Thank you, folks. Questions concerning pay in the county. Many county departments have unfilled positions and high turnover that may be caused by below-average pay in a tight labor market. What will you do to fill vacant positions, reduce turnover, and attract qualified people to work for county government? And specifically, or in particular, what do we need to do to improve compensation for our first responders, fire and sheriff? And this one will go first to Vicky.
The first thing I would do is to return all hiring practices to the Human Resources Department. Each department in the county at this time are hiring most of their own people. And it's not going through the Human Resources Department so that all of these people are consistently vetted and the hiring practice is done the same way. So that would be the first thing. Also, I would do performance appraisals. And it would be, evaluations would be based on performance. Everybody would have it. But you know, if you're a worker, you also want that the people that aren't doing their job are getting the raise just as much as the people that are getting their jobs. From a standpoint of compensation, I understand in the new budget that there are increases for fire and there's also increases for the sheriff's office. We need to do an assessment and look, and I don't know if a full, it's all the other employees too, but I don't know that another assessing the entire employee group on what the compensation is. It needs to be assessed. So it needs to be assessed. There needs to be compensation review of all employees.
For the four years I was on the board, the sheriff gave us a four-year plan. We have funded two out of those four years, so we are very well aware of what his needs are. We recently, with our new fire chief, was given a plan and we have worked to put that into the budget. It has a long way to go, but at least we're making strides. Morgan Oil, we've noticed this. We've had turnover. We've had a loss of employees. And so I ran a separate payroll right along with the current one and figuring out how we were going to actually raise our $7 wage to $9, which is really nothing exactly to brag about, but in the current industry, we are the leader with that. And we took all our employees up. So we knew the day we decided to institute it, we would not have a serious cash flow problem or the bank calling us, going, what the heck's happened to your checking account? So I believe there's ways it can be done. I think one of the ways we did Morgan Oil, I could certainly put that practice into the Board of Commissioners and see if we can't do that and look at what prices, what cost, what income level, let's see, what, well, excuse me, what firefighters in the surrounding area and what deputies in the surrounding area are making so we can be competitive.
And Daniel?
Can I say something before we start my thing or is that out of order?
Out of order.
Okay, never mind. Sorry.
It's all right. Thanks for asking.
Well, now I'm gonna say it. I need to show a hands of how many people in here are connected real close to our school board. Okay, two, three, three people? Okay, that's, that's one thing. All right, if you want this county to do good, in my opinion, you've got to get the school board working with the county a little bit. You know, like how much their budget's going up. And I'm not all up on that because I've not been in that. But I do know that the county, that the school does get a penny splosh. And it's been going on for I don't know how many years, maybe somebody else could answer that. But the splosh money, you still got to look at it when that splosh is getting close to running out. And you can use that, which also Harrelson County's splosh is a penny more than ours, which, you know, I don't want to live in Harrelson County because Harrelson County folks pay school tax till they die. Now, I just turned 66. Mine just stopped. I took that money that I was gonna pay on that. I took it and paid to run for this office. It's just what I've done with that part of that money to where that I didn't have to ask for money from people and to where that I can do the job. But I think we got to look at those things and get that in order. It needs, it needs to really be looked at hard. Thank you.
Lee?
Would you please repeat that question?
Okay, where is the question?
Messed you up, didn't it?
Yeah, a little bit.
This is why I have my wife here. That's not part of this. That's just explanation of this. Many county departments have unfilled positions and high turnover that may be caused by below-average pay in a tight labor market. What will you do to fill vacant positions, reduce turnover, and attract qualified people to work for the county government? And one of the very specific questions related to this was, what must we do to improve compensation for our first responders, fire and sheriff?
As most of y'all know, if you know anything about me, is I've always said that our employees are our biggest asset that the county has. And we have to take, it's not an option. We have to take care of our employees. And what I would like to do is to start building a career path for our employees and not just be a job. I don't want it to look at it, I don't want the employees to look at that's just a job. Are we gonna get a raise this year? Is, or what kind of raise are y'all gonna give us this year? I want to build a career path that each employee is excited to say that, hey, I work for Carroll County. And in doing that, I understand that we have, the pay is down from other surrounding counties. But since I've been on the board, that was one of the things that I said when I was running for the 5th district, that I would like to see our county employees start getting the pay up to where the surrounding counties are. And we have done that. And I'm proud to say that our firefighters are gonna get a dollar or I'll raise in this new budget. We have fulfilled the second, second year of the sheriff's plan. And I'm gonna continue on that. But more importantly, I want to continue to build a career path for our employees instead of just having a job.
John?
Everybody in this room is worried about their bottom line. And the biggest thing is the pay. I mean, it's just the way it is. A starting deputy makes $13 an hour. Firefighter's $9.50. I'm not going out there and letting somebody shoot at me for $13 an hour. But I can work at Michelle's gas station for almost nine and not have to worry about it. But the thing is, is you got to, to keep them, it's simple. You're gonna have to pay them. I mean, it's just the way it is. I mean, we've been in the billboard business for 25 years and this is the first time I ever remember people, business owners, renting billboards from us with help wanted on it. So if the county's not paying them, it's nothing but a phone call away from finding a job. But in this new budget, they give all these, the first responders the raise, but they left out a big part of the Carroll County government. That's the public works. People, you guys have no idea what kind of work them guys do. They're getting a 2% raise and it doesn't start till 2020. And I just don't feel that's right. They's $2.7 million, from what I understand, is $2 million. There's two, there's $2.7 million, from what I understand, there's $2 million of that going in for pay raises. $700,000, I know, I heard them say they was adding a couple positions, and that's not right, what we doing to the, the public works people by not giving them their money upfront.
All right, thank you all. I have, we have received a raft of questions related to environmental concerns, pollution, preservation of natural resources, sustainability. Let me just ask a general question related to all this and see how much of this I can pull together. What do you see as some of the greatest environmental concerns for Carroll County over the next several years? And what possible solutions might you propose to rectify the problems? And Michelle, we start with you on this one, please.
Well, we do need to protect our environment, and especially here in Carroll County with all the rural and agricultural heritage that we so much enjoy as we're driving around in our community. I can say that I have been volunteering with Keep Carroll Beautiful for I don't know how many years, so I'm very well informed and educated on things we can do and things we should be doing, and we've been implementing that as part of Keep Carroll Beautiful. I can also say that I was part of the Carrollton Green Belt. I mean, what a great environmental thing that we have created for health, you know, making sure we all stay healthy and get our exercise. So I, I see protecting the environment is, is more than just the air and the water, but also our, our personal health. So, I think I've already been doing things, and I'm, I'm very open to learning more and seeing how to implement those as we go forward.
And Daniel?
Okay, well, you know, the federal government has the, they've got the big responsibility in that. I know we've got some, but they've, you know, and, and you, you take like Southwire here, they, they've come a real long ways, and I guess as far as our environment, environment, other than the cars of us not having emissions or something like that again, you know, to help there, which they build, the cars and the gas is clean, you know, I mean, we're not dumping into the Chattahoochee that I know of, like I stated here a few weeks ago, and I wasn't being ugly toward Whitesburg, I, I was just, just being whatever, but, 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 you know, you, you, I mean, if y'all think a little bit back in the 70s when all the trees died out there at Southwire, and, you know, they, they've worked hard, in my opinion, to help that. E, even at Morgan Oil, they've got their, they have to work, I mean, you can't, and even at the telephone company where I worked, we, we had those, those, I mean, you had to, you had to have, you had to have it together because they're going to come and find you. I mean, I don't mean find you, they going, F-I-N-E, find you. Oh, thank you.
Again, I'm going to have to ask you to repeat that question.
That's fine. I am ready for you this time.
Must be done good.
What do you see as some of the greatest environmental concerns for Carroll County over the next several years? And what possible solutions might you propose to rectify the problems? And I'm happy to repeat questions at any point during this forum, so feel free to.
Thank you very much, and I'm glad you asked that question because water is one of the greatest things that we have and we have to protect it. I'm one of the, well, I am the only person on the board that, I went around our board to do it. I went to the Health Board to protect our water, and I went to them because the number one ground contamination in, in America is our failing septic systems, and I realize that, and, and it can, it contaminates our groundwater. And so, I, I went to our board and asked them about, about us increasing the lot sizes so we could have a larger area, and I didn't get anywhere with it, so I went to the Health Board. There's two ways to do that, our board and the Health Board. So I went to the Health Board, I presented my plan to protect the water in Carroll County, and they all wanted to vote for it the first time, but we, we decided we need to let the attorneys to look at it and come back and, and vote for it the next month, and, and it passed unanimously. So I am working to protect our environment because once we contaminate something, it costs a lot of money to, to fix it. So, I'm, I think I'm working hard, and I think I'll continue to work hard, and I've got some other plans to even protect it even further.
To me, that is, the EPA, EPD, state, federal, local, just to help them, it's, it's not really a, a county-level issue far as, as I'm concerned. I mean, there's, we can't make different rules than the EPA and the EPD do to govern that kind of thing. You don't have to wait on me too long, do you?
Wait for him to get his numbers right. You ready? The, one of the biggest concerns, I think, in environmental is we've got to be concerned about the hooch, Chattahoochee, Chattahoochee that's being dumped in from Atlanta that comes through Whitesburg and, and that type thing, and we really have to stay on top of what's happening there. We have, and in Environmental Health Department, they go out and check any issue that is, they check septic tanks, they check any issue. I've been called for sewage smells and leaks from people's houses that might seep into the water, and they're always available for, to go and report and do any kind of assessment. I believe that we use them to the fullest extent. And any other problem that, or anything that's been identified as an issue, I'm not aware of anything currently that, but we do have a department and we make sure that we address those things. Thank you.
All right, thanks to all of you. And here's, here's one very more specific question related to environmental concerns. You've touched on it, but let me ask it more directly. It's on the subject of coal ash. Carroll County is adjacent to two active Georgia Power Company sites, Plant Yates and Wansley. The company is currently moving or planning to move coal ash from unlined ponds into unlined line fields. Georgia Power's own groundwater mounting at these sites indicated that toxic contaminants like lithium and heavy metals like beryllium have been found in groundwater. As a county commission chair, what will you do to make sure private drinking water wells around the coal ash sites and the Chattahoochee River are not contaminated with heavy metals and other contaminants known to be harmful to human health? And Daniel, this one, but go to you first, please.
Okay, uh, I've worked at Plant Wansley, been down there and working a lot on telephone stuff, okay, because that, that's what I did. That company down there, they're, they're real good, you, you, I mean, I know you're going to have accidents sooner or later, just like if you're at home and you try to do everything you can not have an accident, sooner or later you may have an accident if you don't watch what you're doing. Okay, uh, you know, I would want to make sure, you know, to go and learn a little bit more because we, when we went down there working, there was times after 9/11 that we had to go through a lot of classes, and they wouldn't let us in the gate. You know, you, you, man, you had to have your badges, you had to be up on all your, all your safety stuff, I mean, they, they, it was, it was tough, you know, I mean, we had to go through four hours of classes down there sometimes. That was a little bit monotonous, but, you know, it had to be done. And that's why I think that they're doing a real good job, but, you know, you can always get slack, one person can get slack on that, and you just want to make sure if they're supposed to be putting anything down in those cars, that they're going to move things, that they want to make sure they do what they're supposed to, and make sure you don't have a leakage or anything. Thank you.
Lee?
The EPA and EPD is in charge of, of, of our groundwater and, and our environmental health around the county, and I would work real, real close with them, and if I had some concerns, I would alert them and, and I would get them out and, and work with them very, very close, the state and the federal, the feds, to, to make sure if there is a leak, what we need to do to clean it up, and if there, and I understand right now that, that Georgia Power is, if you've been around Whitesburg, they're moving a lot of dirt right now to cover up some of them spools and stuff, and I think the EPA and EPD are working very close with them. And I would continue to work very close with the state and the federal officials to, to make sure, and if we identify something that is leaking, we'd make, I would make sure that they, that it got cleaned up and got cleaned up right in, in a timely manner.
Yes, and like I said, that's a, to me, that's EPA, EPD issue, but what the county can do is let the citizens out there know that they can get their wells tested at the Department of Health, and, but far as, far as some type of holding their feet to the fire, I don't believe the county chairman position has any authority for that, I think that falls on the EPA, EPD.
I think that I would work with EPA and EPD in order to make sure that whatever they need, that we would, we would meet, we would answer and do the support of whatever we need, whatever they need, whatever falls under the local purview, we would do that with environmental health, and support any monitoring that would be needed, and make the citizens aware of anything. I think that's one thing that we lacked, we lack many times is to inform the public of what's going on, and so we make sure that all that's done. Thanks.
Well, our business does operate under some heavy checks and balances of the laws with the EPD, so I already have a lot of contacts with people in these areas, so easy to talk with them. I think we could easily, as chairman, sit down with the Georgia Power Company, sit down with Carroll County Water Authority, and any other people in the community that are interested in this, and have conversations to make sure that these problems don't become a problem, that we already are aware and we know what they're doing to keep this from happening. I currently also serve on an ad hoc committee with the Chattahoochee River Keepers that we're trying to connect all the parts from the very top of Georgia all the way down to Columbus. So, conversations are already happening about these things, and there's lots of checks and balances, but yes, I would be continuing the conversation and be involved with it.
Let's move from the environment to, to the library. Several questions related to West Georgia Regional Library. Last year, West Georgia Regional Library introduced a new formula dividing the $250,000 the county commission provides for Carroll County's six libraries. With this formula, 80% of those funds now go to Carrollton and Villarica's libraries, leaving only 20% for the libraries in Bowden, Mount Zion, Temple, and Whitesburg. What is your view on this formula's division of funds, and how do you feel about a rural library supplement in addition to the $250,000? And Lee, this would go to you first, please.
I don't like the way that they divided it up because it hurts the rural libraries. It, it, it did hurt Whitesburg and, and some of the rural libraries. I love our libraries. I think it's very apparent that I do. Right before I left, I, I left some money to the Whitesburg Library to help them out. I, I do believe all the libraries are very important to our community, but the rural libraries, I think that there's a lot of, being that the internet, the, is not very accessible in the rural parts of the county, I think that the rural libraries, there's a lot of people come and to use the wifi there, so we do need to make sure that we fund every one of our libraries and fund them so they will stay open, and especially the rural ones. And, and I'm committed to, to do that when I become chairman. I think the library people, especially the friends of Whitesburg, they, they understand that I am very, very committed to taking care of and to keeping the Whitesburg Library open the full amount of hours that they're supposed to be, and, and I'll continue, I have worked hard, and I will continue to work hard with the libraries because they're a big asset in our communities, and it's a great need for them.
And John?
Yes, libraries is very important part of Carroll County. But, there we go again. Every little piece, every little entity, every little thing wants part of the money that's coming in. You're going to have to look and see if you got it. I would be well, much rather give the library board money than I had to hire a communications director for Carroll County, which is in this budget. Absolutely, if, if our kids are in the library, they're not, it's hard to get in trouble in the library, so. I, I would al, I've always supported the library. It was, I was on the board when it was built in Whitesburg, the one in Whitesburg, so I've always, my mother-in-law, she would skin me up if I didn't support the library, so.
The county government gives $250,000 a year to the West Georgia library system, and my understanding is that it is distributed based on population. So, the city of Carrollton, the city of Villarica are going to get more because it's based on population. The county has no control over the West Georgia library system on how they do things, and from a standpoint of the whole library system as a whole, we have no, we have no control over the budgeting, and so I have, we contribute, and as far as, I don't know, what I would say is, we had issues at the end of the year with the way things were done, and so I think the West Georgia library system has a way of doing things, and the county itself is not totally a part of that.
Well, of course, it's no secret, I own a bookstore, so I'm avidly supporter of books and reading and other programs that the library provides for our students, our senior citizens, and even myself. I, I check out books quite a bit. I disagree in the fact that the county Board of Commissioners does have a say in how the funds are spent, and it all goes back to who we appoint on the board. So in the last two years, one of my appointments was someone who has an MBA from the University of West Georgia, so they can really look at the funds and make sure they are being distributed correctly. And another recent appointment of a person I suggested has a doctor's in education. So I think by appointing people who are interested and can understand libraries, we can have those funds be possibly distributed a different way. I feel strongly that maybe as income comes in, we can do a separate line item, and we can give to our libraries equally instead of by population.
Okay, and Daniel?
Okay-dokey, I'm probably going to give y'all a little too much information, but I dated a librarian for about two years when I first got divorced, and I'm just being honest. And she worked at Carrollton, and then she had several years there, and she left there and went to Villarica Library, and Villarica and Carrollton's library, they're a little bit different. She was understate, and I think the guy here likes that, so, but anyway, what I say, but anyway, okay. But, but, you know, I learned a lot going to the library and then, and I, I, that, that's what happened. I went to that library, and then that happened to me. And, you know, maybe I shouldn't have never went to that library, but, but, you know, I was going there because back then they weren't much computer, and, you know, with me working phone company, yeah, if you live out, out in the sticks, what I call the sticks, no, you don't have much computer out there, and it's just go dial up and it's slow, but, but, you know, that's about, you know, I, I do appreciate having the libraries, and I think, you know, you need to make sure that every, every library gets their fair share, you know? Thank you.
Okay. John, we'll start with you on this one. Questions concerning farming, rural quality of life in Carroll County. With development increasing in the county, what should the county government do to support continued farming and rural quality of life in Carroll County? And related to this is a splosh question about use of splosh funds to match federal dollars to permanently preserve agricultural land in Carroll County. Would you can support continued use of splosh funds to preserve agricultural land? So, those two related things, that's a lot to answer in 90 seconds, I realize.
We have a land use map and a comprehensive plan that lays out where the farmland is and should remain. I say we stick with that, and as far as the, the splosh, I was a part of the group that we secured several thousand acres of splo, of land. It was a, it was a grant that come down from the, the US government. I think the county had to pay 25- had to pay 25%. The landowner gave 25% and the federal government picked up the other 50% of the total value of the land. So it was a pretty good bang for you, Buck, far as keeping the farmland the way it is and the way it's always been. And it, and it's an easement that from now on, they have to, they can't, they can build barns, they can build shops, they cannot build residential houses, that kind of thing on it for, from now on. So it's something that I did support whenever I was on the board and I'll continue. If, if the funds come back from the federal level, yes, I would support it.
The, um, in maintaining the farming and the rural, rural heritage and the land, um, the comprehensive plan has identified the areas that are to be, uh, to maintain, be maintained as agriculture. Um, I did not think SPOST dollars were used. I'm not sure about that on the, uh, we had a, um, on the land, the trans, when we purchased land and they went into perpetuity as far as the land use, I'm not sure, um, if SPOST dollars were used for that. And I, I think there were government dollars that were shared. We did share them for that. Um, so if there is funding available, uh, and, uh, a mutual agreement, then I have no problem with that.
SPOST dollars were used during my four years. Um, I saw, I supported it and I would continue to support it. Uh, the land use map, I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but I did serve on the committee. Uh, there were areas that we actually brought agricultural back in that would originally have been part of residential. So we really increased, uh, what we want to keep as agricultural in this county in the last, um, update to the plan. Morgan Oil has a tank wagon business. Most of you think of us as retail, but we supply close to 50 farm and industry accounts in this area. So I would definitely continue to support that for, for many various reasons, for family business as well as for our, our community growth.
Okay. I also support that, and this is my reason. Okay, I've got 24 acres. It backs up to John Tanner Park, which is Carroll County's now, and it's across from Mount Zion High School. Uh, back, I can't tell you how many years ago, I had three dairymen that had joined me with property and they raised dairy cows and had milk. Okay, there's not a dairy farm left in Carroll County. Now, I know that, that's not our fault, but yet that stuff is gone, so now all you've got there is beef cattle. And, uh, you know, which I've not raised cattle now in about 22 years, but, but, you know, I, I raise it. I control bread because I like to have my cows coming in where me and my son could watch after them and you when they were coming, because we were small. But, but it just, uh, you know, we're controlling some of that. And I guess that's why I like to see a balance, because that balance has got out of hand. To be honest with you, I guess the only dairy farm is over on High Point Road, uh, a little north of Bowden, right on the line. And that, that guy sells, he, he's got a business. He sells fresh chocolate milk, butter, and all that stuff. If y'all ever wanna check it out, he'd probably glad to take your money. Thank you.
Yeah, oh, it's no surprise that, that, that I am a farmer and I do protect the farmland. Um, I've appreciated since I became the fifth district commi, uh, commissioner that we, we have to protect our rural heritage, because I understand when we don't and we lose it, it never comes back. So I understand the importance of protecting the rural farmland. I understand, I understand, and I do support, uh, the farm bill that allows the, um, county and the state and the federal to, um, purchase the, um, development rights on these farms. And I'm a big proponent of that. And I know that there's some people in here that have sold their development rights to their farm, uh, and, and, and I, I'm a big champion of that. And I, I, I praise you for doing that, because once you sell your development rights, you, that farm can never be developed for subdivision. It has to sustain as a farm. So yes, I'm a very big proponent. I live it. I've got a hundred and something head of cattle and I'm, I'm, I'll be fighting for the rural heritage of Carroll County. And, uh, I have been fighting and I will continue to fight for the rural heritage of Carroll County and protect our farmlands and to protect, uh, the, um, the rural, to buy the, uh, go, to buy the development rights back from the farmers. I'm a big proponent of that. Thank you.
I'm aware that these chairs get pretty hard after an hour. And if you will indulge us, let's ask these candidates just a couple more questions before we go to their closing statements and wind things up this evening. Uh, beginning with Vicky, can you please explain T-SPOST and if you are for it or against it and why? And we'll go around the whole group.
T-SPOST is a, um, was a transportation tax that was proposed for the county. And, um, it, it did not pass. It's been there, it's been on the ballot, or it's been presented to the people two times and it's been voted down. Um, it is a tax that is 40% that is collected from people that come and visit, um, and pay in taxes and they don't require services. It would have been used for roads repairs and things like that. I did not feel like Carroll County, there were parts Villarica needed it, there were parts of town that, in the part of the county that needed the tax, but I did not feel like the utilization of how it was set up was something that, um, um, I was that fond of. So, um, it's been voted down twice. I would not bring that tax back up again, um, uh, for presentation. Thank you.
I was for putting the T-SPOST on the ballot because I believe anything that the state or the people want to vote on should be going to a ballot because it is your choice. Uh, it really had some good things that needed to happen, but the, the public did speak on it and they voted no. I think some of that was the, the education of how we communicated to the public. I don't know if we could redo it all over again, if it would change. And that's one of the reasons I think it's important. We have a communications director. Um, all businesses, industries are moving in that direction and we need to do a better job of communicating with the public. So at least when you do go to the polls and vote, you know for sure what you're voting on, because there was a lot of misinformation out there on Facebook about what this T-SPOST was. So no, I wouldn't bring it up anytime soon unless the public really advocated for it.
Okay. I didn't, I, like I said before, I, I didn't vote for it, uh, because of not being properly educated on it, uh, and not trying to keep up with any other county or anything, just because one county's got 8% and we got 7%. I don't care what they got. All I care about is what's in Carroll County. As far as me being commissioner, that, that's what I want to take care of Carroll County first. Uh, we have got a penny SPOST that's gonna be coming off in March of 2021. Okay, I don't see why it would hurt to wait until then in the following November and then of November of 2021, bringing that up again, if and it can be waited on that long. And, and if, if the, if the county workers, uh, that knows, you know, because part of that was supposed to go for bridges, some bad bridges, if, if then they know for sure that those bridges are not gonna hold up, and one of them's on Tyse Road, uh, you know, Tyse Carrollton Road, then you gotta look serious at something if that bridge is that bad. And, and I know it's pretty darn bad because I didn't like going across in a big old phone truck. You know, it was, it's kinda, it's pretty darn near. Thank you.
Would you please repeat that?
Yes, sir. I will.
Can you please explain T-SPOST and if you are for or against it and why?
T-SPOST is a consumption tax, and I think the consumption tax is the most fair tax that we can use. And I believe that it would, it would relieve a lot of our, um, road problems. You know, um, one of the most questions that I received as a commissioner was, was road problems. And, um, one of them, our elderly, and we, we have to, it's a public safety issue, y'all, the roads are. And a lot of elderly, uh, citizens would call and say, "Mr. Powers, would y'all please stripe this road? I use that white stripe getting home from church at night." And I'm telling y'all, it's very, very important that we maintain our roads, especially the striping of our roads. And this is what the T-SPOST is for. It's for maintaining our roads and our bridges. I was for the T-SPOST. I don't think that we need to bring it back up right away, but I think we do need to bring it back up to give the relief, because they say that we're having 10% of our bridges are going bad in the state of Georgia. And I think we have around 100. So that would say we'd have 10 bridges that would not pass a state inspection if, if we go on what the state's report was. So yes, I would probably bring it back up because it is the most fair tax that we can have. And it would, it would relieve our, the landowners from having the burden, burden of having to pay so much taxes.
T-SPOST is by far the fairest tax that you can have. Everybody pays it. The people coming up down the interstate pay it. They leave, their money stays here. But I bet you, every one of you guys sitting in this room tonight learned more about the T-SPOST in the last five minutes than you did the whole time they were trying to get it passed. Because people thought it was gonna be trains, buses, transportation. They had no idea. They didn't go, they didn't come to you guys with, with lists of roads. They didn't come to you guys with subdivisions. One subdivision a year gets paved in Carroll County, if you're lucky. One. One. We could have been paving subdivisions right now if it had a pass. But they did not get the word out. They went around, they, they, you, they were basically asking you for a blank check and you guys, and I voted no on it too, because I didn't know what they was gonna spend it on. I am definitely not for co, for buses and mass transit. I'm not for it. But I am for fixing the roads where they properly need to be fixed, but it wasn't sold that way. Like I said, I guarantee you, you all learned tonight way more than you did the six or eight months they was trying to get it passed.
Okay, and thank you. One last question, uh, starting with Michelle. The existing county administration building is old and inadequate with leaks, bugs, and mold. Is SPOST money still appropriated for construction of a new county administration building? What are your plans for this project?
In our last work session back in February, there's still our funds that we discussed on to put towards the county admin building. I think part of the problem is deciding on where to put the county admin building, whether to remodel this one, buy land somewhere. So there's still discussions being happening. Of course, come August, it could possibly be almost a whole new board. So there are funds in the current SPOST to get a project sort of started on that. And I would be more supportive of, of reviewing whether we want to remodel or, uh, build somewhere new within the Carrollton city limits, because this is the county seat and it's a lot of places right here that rely on that, this county building.
Yeah, I'm next. Yeah, I'm, I know. Uh, I'm, I guess I'm a little lost on some things. Uh, and what, what I mean by that is I, I agree that you might wanna remodel, uh, because if you do that, the sixth district people and the head guy, he will look at what the people are charging to remodel that. And if, and if I'm not speaking, you know, holding my mouth close enough, tell me. Okay, raise your hand. Okay. Uh, but, okay, you take, for example, like John Tanner Park got, I don't know what we gave for it, or, or if the state just give it to us because they was afraid, you know, it's, it was a smaller state park in the state of Georgia. It was. And, uh, so, but now, if you notice, and, and maybe I'm wrong because I've not checked into that and I wanna talk to Mr. Chance after things, but I noticed the Georgia Powers, I mean, the Georgia State Patrol post has got county signs on it now, like we own it. And you don't go in there. And I, I was just curious, because, you know, maybe I'm in, I know, I'm, guess I'm in partly in dark because I've not been in there, but I wanna know about that. Thank you.
I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat that question one more time.
County administration building.
The existing county administration building is old and inadequate with leaks, bugs, and mold. Is SPOST money still appropriated for construction of a new county administration building? And what are your plans for this project?
There is the money still appropriated for it. And I would be a strong opponent to, um, to build a, a new administrative building where we could bring everybody under one roof. So when our citizens, if they came and they needed to speak to the commissioner and at the same time, they need to get their tags, or if they need to go to the community development or, or get their business license, it would be a big, uh, it'd be a huge benefit for us to build a new, uh, uh, county administration building just for our citizens, so they can all, it'd be a one-stop shop. And, um, and everybody be under the same roof. Now, where it needs to be built, I would be, I would start, uh, looking at, uh, where the best location to put it. Uh, I would like to put it in a central location, 'cause I'd like to be fair to the surrounding other cities and, and, um, and so everybody, it would be accessible to everyone in the county. But we do need, we do need a new administration building. I think it would be a big, it would be a huge benefit to, uh, put us all under one roof, so when our citizens come, they could see and, and take care of their business all at one time and, and see, and everybody they need to see on one trip to, to wherever we build the administration building.
Absolutely, we need the administration building. We've been in, talking about this since 2010. It's time to do it. Now your commission chairman is sitting over at their old courthouse. We used to, when we had our commission meetings right here, we would have at least 10 to 25 people, citizens, every night, every commission meeting participate. There's, it's too far of a walk for our senior citizens to go from the parking deck all the way to the courthouse. It should have never been put there. As far as location, it needs to be off the bypass where it's easy for the Villarica folks, the Bowden folks, the Whitesburg folks, the whole, it, it, everybody is easy to get in and out of the bypass, off of the bypass somewhere in that area. As far as this place right here, it needs to be tore down. A park put here or is, is pretty valuable real estate, in my opinion, that the county might, could recoup some of their money on selling it to the private side. So, uh, yes, absolutely. The, uh, the administration building is something, as Daddy used to say, kicking the can down the road, we've kicked it long enough. It's time to, to make it happen.
The voters voted in, voted for the administration building in the SPOST that passed. And so it's still pending out there. And if you don't use it for that, then you can lose some of the monies for the SPOST. So, uh, one of the issues that we had, uh, when I was on the board recently was that there was an issue on location, uh, for the administrative building. I really miss having the meetings down here because you can hear, uh, you can't hear in the courthouse up there. That'd be one of the first things I would do, is move the meetings back here until, even till we decided what we wanted to do, because it's, the acoustics are horrible there. You can't walk there, uh, all kinds of problems. So I think this is a discussion that we have to have and decide how we want to address and present, um, and resolve the issue of the county administration building. But the citizens have voted for it to be built.
That wraps it up, so far as the questions are concerned. So we'll start now with the, uh, closing statements. We'll begin with Vicky and we reverse the order under my wife's scheme. Uh, Vicky first, then we'll go to James, and we wind up then at the end with Michelle, so.
Come to me, Vicky, me.
John.
John.
Vicky to John, and then Lee, Daniel, and the last shall be first. That's right.
Except for the last tw, except for the last five men, months, I've spent the last 12 years as a commissioner. And I have worked under three different chairmans. And those 12 years have given me something that no one else has up here, and that's experience. Um, Carroll County- Carroll County's unique. It's gonna take a diverse individual to deal with the dynamics. You have a Fortune 500 company sitting in downtown Carrollton, South Wire. You have rural farmland out there. I mean, we have a diverse county. And speaking of the farmland, we are number one in beef production in Carroll County and the state, and we're number two in poultry. Healthcare is second only to salary dollars in the county's monthly online budget. I have been in healthcare for over 40 years. I know the language, I know the processes, I know a lot of that. There's no other candidate that has that experience with healthcare. You cannot replace institutional learning, but I've been to the school of hard knocks. I think I have the experience that matters, and I'd appreciate your vote for chairman. Thank you.
I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming out. Like I said, I have seven years on the Board of Commissioners. We went through some of the worst times that any of us that's sitting in this room have seen. We did it all without raising your taxes. We did give small raises to the employees, not a lot, but they weren't losing their jobs, they were maintaining their jobs. Carroll County does, is a great place to live, and I would like to keep it that way. We got a county just to our, to our east over here in Douglas County, that we need to do what we gotta do to keep it at bay. We don't need that kind of rip rap over here, from the drugs, the gangs, the, the whole nine yard. We need to continue to keep our county the way it is, agriculturally strong, business strong, and faith-based community. I'd like to ask for your vote June 18th. And if I can ever answer any questions, we have a Facebook page, just message me and I'll, I usually respond pretty quick. So thank y'all for coming out again, and I'd like to have your vote.
Yes, I'd like to thank each and every one of y'all for coming out today. Carroll County is a unique county, and it's a great place to live, and we've got great citizens here that I would love to be, have the privilege to serve. But as I say, we have a great, unique place. And y'all, when we lose it, we lose it. And I believe that this next board that's coming in, it's, it's gonna be the mo- one of the most important boards that's ever been on this, on this Board of Commissioners, because what we allow to start in Carroll County is what Carroll County is gonna be. Back in the late 90s and early 2000, the Commission Board of Douglas County, they set their path of what it's gonna be. And it is what it is right now. It's a lot of starter homes, it's a lot of crime, it's a lot of gangs, it's a lot of stuff that's been happening over in Douglas County that I don't wanna see to come, come to Carroll County. And I am the right man for the job. I understand land use, I understand how, what kind of businesses we need to bring in here. I've ran a business, I started my own business, I run a very successful business, I'm a farmer. So I understand the unique parts of Carroll County. We have the most important thing in Carroll County is our employees, and I, and they're the biggest assets. And I understand the responsibility that I'm gonna have as chair to take care of our employees. So I would ask for y'all's vote on, on the 18th of June to be y'all's next Carroll County Commissioner. I do believe I am the right choice. So please vote for Lee Powers on the 18th.
Okay. I, I appreciate the folks coming out, because it shows you care. If you remember, a lot of you back in the day, tag numbers went by population. Carroll was 20. Douglas was 57. Paulding was 75. There's two counties that's got more people in them than we do now, and that's Paulding and Douglas. And they're smaller. Now, I feel like the people that's been in charge prior to this has done a pretty good job of what they've been doing. And I guess that's why I ran, because I wanted to keep that going, you know, and, and my card doesn't say vote for me, and I'm gonna reiterate that. But it says it wants you to go vote. It tells you when to go vote. And that, that, that's what I'm stressing to you, and you go vote and you figure out who you gonna vote for, because I, I'm not gonna tell you to vote for me, because that ain't gonna do no good. And I don't put no signs up, because it ain't gonna do no good. You gonna vote for who you gonna vote for, and I just, you know, want you to think about who you voting for. Thank you.
Thanks again for being here tonight. Carroll County has a lot on the line in deciding who will lead our community as the next chair. I have listened to you, whether on the phone, by email, at your door, or even in the grocery store, and I will work for you to make our community stronger. I have a bold vision for Carroll County. I want to create opportunities right here. I want to keep our talent local, working in our businesses, industry, and county government. I want to ensure this is a place where our kids can return to live and find a good job. I want to maintain and enhance our county and public safety workforce. But we need more than talk. I will work with state leaders, local businesses, the chamber to attract new business and investment. With new investment, we can expand our tax base and be able to increase pay for our public safety and county employees, while still trying to keep your taxes low. And I will bring business principles to help protect those taxpayers and ensure accountability in the budget process. Running a business isn't easy. During the past recession, we all faced tough times. My husband Jimmy and I are proud that we pay our bills on time. We didn't lay off a single employee, and we did not close a store. That experience is irreplaceable. More importantly, I will continue my record of listening to you. I have a vision, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you all for coming. This is a great turnout for a very important election, and we will see you on June 18th. BURGER.